It's come to order. Welcome to the special workshop for the Upland City Council. Here at City Council chambers, we also have a remote location of Kaiser Permanente Regional Laboratory, Room 2201, 1300 Peyton Drive, Chino Hills for Councilmember Zuniga, Mayor Protem Zuniga. I'd like to make a motion that we allow...
No, it was properly noticed.
Okay, it was properly noticed. Thank you very much. Rudy, you with us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'm right here.
All right, thank you. Let's have a roll call then.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Present.
Councilmember Breitling.
Present.
Mayor Protem Zuniga.
Here.
Mayor Velto.
Present. He's actually there. All right. So, and you're all communications.
This is a time for anyone to comment on any item listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address a legislative body is requested to submit a speaker card to the city clerk at or prior to speaking. I do not have any speaker cards.
All right, let's go. Agenda item, please.
That is mid-year capital improvement program, CIP update, and proposed public works reorganization staffing plan, and that is going to be presented by our Assistant City Manager, Damian Arula.
All right. We're just getting pulled up right now. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Damian, Arula Assistant City Manager, currently overseeing the Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation, and Emergency Services. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to share some critical mid-year updates on the capital improvement program, commonly known as the CIP, as well as present a proposed reorganizational plan that better aligns our staffing structure with current and future infrastructure needs of our community. We'll begin by explaining what capital improvement is and how it's our main driver of change in public works. We'll walk through recent infrastructure assessments, highlight key projects, and outline the challenges we're facing under our current organizational structure. You'll then see a comparative look at how our staffing aligns with peer agencies before we present the proposed reorganization and its fiscal impact. Over the past several years, the scope and cost of our CIP has grown dramatically. However, our staffing model has not kept pace. We now face a critical mismatch between the infrastructure and work that needs to be done and the resources we have available to deliver these projects effectively and efficiently. We've undertaken several infrastructure master plans to evaluate the condition of our public assets and proactively address structural and regulatory vulnerabilities. Our teams in coordination with third-party assessment firms are taking a closer look at our sewer, water, pavement, and sidewalk infrastructure needs. While some of these plans are still being finalized, the data we've gathered so far paints a consistent picture: Our infrastructure is significantly aging, and the need for reinvestment is urgent. Streets, public buildings, and parks are showing signs of significant deterioration, do not include ADA compatibility, and demonstrate a pattern of deferred maintenance. Notably, more than 40% of our water infrastructure has exceeded its intended 50-year design life, and many of our roads now require full rehabilitation. Staff believes that it's incredibly important to use the data in these plans to educate our community about our infrastructure deficiencies and financial needs so we can work together to improve Upland's future. So let's take a brief look at the tools we've used to assess the systems and how this data will directly shape our investment priorities and capital project delivery strategy going forward. The Pavement Condition Index, or PCI as it's also known, is a standardized tool used across the country to evaluate the health of roadways. It measures roadway service conditions on scales from, on a scale from 0 to 100 with higher numbers indicating better pavement quality. There are seven PCI categories ranging from failed to good. A PCI of 70 or higher is considered ideal, where cities can focus primarily on low-cost routine maintenance like slurry seals or minor repairs to preserve pavement quality over time and those investments made. Now, turning our attention to the magnitude of the roadway network we're responsible for, Upland maintains over 191 miles of roadway, including arterials, collectors, and residential streets. To fully restore this entire network today, it would require an investment of approximately $160 million. And this figure is growing daily. Our most recent assessment determined that the overall health of this network falls within the fair range, with a PCI score of 57 throughout the city.
Excuse me, Damian. Just as we go along, I want to ask a little more clarification. That, that, that evaluation was done by a third party, correct?
That is correct.
That was not done by city employees?
Correct.
It was hired by an outside contractor who specializes in that?
Correct. They do these pavement condition reports. They actually measure the condition of each mile of roadway. And so there is a map that is produced based on those subject matter experts that essentially color codes each individual street within the colors that you see here before us today.
All right, thank you. I wanted to make sure we're clear with that with the residents, that this is not being done by city employees. This has been contracted out, or those specifically are disciplined in that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They do it for multiple cities as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's also important to note that this company that does this evaluation is not in the contracting business, so there's no incentive for them to, to lower the PCI so that they can get construction work, because they don't do that. All they do is the evaluation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we have, as I mentioned before, approximately $160 million backlog, as identified by our subject matter expert, and this figure is growing daily. Our most recent assessment is our average citywide score of 57. That score places us in a critical zone. Roads in this range require more than just surface-level maintenance, and it means we must begin implementing a more aggressive overlay strategy to prevent steep declines and avoid costlier reconstruction later, which I'll, I'll share a little bit more detail in a moment. While our current PCI score is 57, it's important to point out that we are right on the edge of being in the poor category, as you can see here. Despite the clear need, the city does not currently have the resources necessary to restore our roadway network. This isn't just a matter of funding. It's a combination of infrastructure financial limitations, staffing capacity constraints, and deferred maintenance compounding over a significant period of time. Without a shift in direction, our pavement condition will continue to deteriorate. If no changes are made, projections show our PCI will fall from 57 to 46 within the next five years alone. Our current streets and roads funding level is $6.38 million per year. This may be confusing to some when they see a project such as Foothill Boulevard, for example. However, it's important to point out that the city will aggregate funds over a period of two to three years, depending on the scope and size of the project, such as Foothill Boulevard, that we're going to be bringing to you shortly. Knowing that, staying at this level will result in a steep decline. Over the next five years, our pavement management plan evaluated what it would take to not just prevent decline, but to maintain as well as improve our roadway network to a reasonable goal of 70. As can be seen here, to simply maintain our PCI of 57, we would need to invest $15.4 million annually, as opposed to the $6.38. To improve it by at least five points, we'd need $19.36 million. And to reach the ideal PCI range of 70 or higher, this investment climbs to $26.23 million per year. And we'll show in context other cities here in a moment as to why 70 is, is, we believe, a reasonable goal for our roadway network as well, not to mention our other infrastructure needs. So even just to hold the line, just to reiterate, we're facing an annual shortfall of over $9 million per year.
Can I ask a question on that slide?
Yes.
I thought the last account that we were bringing in $10.3 million a year between gas tax, that RMA, and the third bucket of money, that we were at a 10.3, and this... So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we're only bringing 6.38?
There was an eight-point-something figure that was used in the current year's budget, but there was an error, a duplication of the RMRA funding that also was put in gas tax in, in a part of the two-year budget. So that, that's what made it from the six to the eight. The 10-figure you're remembering might be the city's 1.7 match for Measure I that might be included in that, but Bob's here, he knows, knows a lot better of the details.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
The 10 million includes the city's maintenance of effort, which is the general fund portion that is required each year. So the 6 million figure is comprised from the gas tax, the RMRA, and the Measure I program. So you are correct, there is approximately 10, but the funding sources for street rehab is your gas tax, Measure I, and the RMRA.
And we do need to pull from general fund, though.
Yeah, we do have to pull from that. That's a maintenance of effort requirement that we have to meet every single year.
Is that a percentage allocation, or...?
That's used mainly by the operations division for, you know, pothole repairs, curb and gutter, street trees, you know, all encompassing everything within a street public right-of-way.
Bob, is that the same amount of money every year, or is that just, would be a one-time?
It's the same amount of money every year that the city is essentially required to achieve. If we fall short of that by a year, we can make it up the following year, but it does need to be made up. If it's not, then funds could be withheld from the city.
And that, that's not just for the roads, it's used for others. That 3 million is used for other, other...
For street purposes, which includes, you know, your curb and gutter, parkway, trees...
Right, not just the pavement. This is pavement we're talking about today, right?
Correct, just pavement today.
The pavement's today, but that other additional funds would be required if you're going to, if you're going to end up doing the rehab, you're going to use those funds in the same rehab, aren't you?
Yes.
Does that be fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, again, it goes down to that funding is being used for additional, like if I'm a car and I'm going to paint it and I want to put new tires on it at the same time, that's on going for the new tires then, it's coming from...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just to be clear, this is for pure, basically rehab projects, mill projects, slurry seals, just pavement projects, not the additional efforts related to our day-to-day operations.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's see. So one of the things that we wanted to do, you know, Upland for some time, you know, discusses its challenges, I believe, when it comes to, you know, whether it's staffing, benchmarks, and other things. And it's brought to my attention, we haven't really done this in the past with respect to comparing ourselves to our peer agencies. These are our colleagues, these are other municipalities that in fact have similar operations to what we do, and we believed it was important to provide that context when determining our goals for local governments, governance here in Upland. Therefore, our team looked at the peer agencies to conduct a brief comparative analysis of PCI scores, and specifically, we gathered this data directly from each city's annual reports or their own pavement management plans that we referred to earlier. While it's easy to determine that Upland's PCI ranks the lowest amongst some of our peer agencies, it's even more important to quantify how much lower. So as can be seen by, here by this slide, Upland is 21% below the regional average of agencies we were able to determine their PCI scores. Now, now, keep in mind, this does not include other agencies. I was, I was telling City Manager Blay, we were trying to get more agencies for purposes of today's presentation. However, some are not as easily identifiable, or we reached out to them. So we'll continue to update this as we go along for educational purposes to the community. But for right now, what you can see is that's a pretty significant margin that we're below to some of the other agencies in the region. As I mentioned before, the total annual budget to achieve a network PCI of 70, and you can see the average is 72 here, is $26.23 million. Let's see here. Based on current projections, our network is on track to fall into the poor range within the next five years, inching closer to very poor if nothing changes. It's also important to note that road deterioration isn't linear, and this cost will accelerate each year there is a deficit. The longer we delay, the more costs of repairs become. For example, what it costs to slurry seal today will jump to eight times the cost, or even 14 times the cost, based upon the additional delayed reconstruction. And so if you were to look at a, a graph, when you look at these types of things, you would see essentially significant orders of increase over, over a shorter period of time, as opposed to a traditional linear graph going up.
Damian, where, where are you getting the estimates for eight times or 14 times?
That is actually coming from our consultant and staff, and we looked at additional, additionally actual bids that have come in for cost of services, depending on whether we do a slurry or we do actual recon, full reconstruction or grind and overlay. As you can see here, what we're talking about is a PCI result of funding and staffing gaps. We wanted to mention this, it really just isn't just a funding challenge. Staffing shortfalls and consistency are also a major factor. Our current team does not have the capacity to consistently design, bid, and deliver rehabilitation projects at the pace needed to keep up with deterioration. As a result, reactive maintenance has become the norm, crowding out opportunities for prevention, excuse me, for preventative care. We've been operating under a run-to-failure model. I can't emphasize that enough as, as a city, and you'll see a little bit when I share some of the staffing. This is something that we want to be a little bit more proactive by working with the community and working with the council, which we're going to share some of those highlights and how we hope to approach that today.
Quickly, I want to just, for the, for the council, we're going to be asked some questions. I want to do is I want to use the queuing method here. Let's use the queuing method, so we can all keep track of what's going on, so I can, I can make the most, a call when do we want to maybe interrupt it, okay? So let's use the queuing method here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So inch, in our project backlog, as it continues to grow, driving up long-term costs and understandably eroding public confidence, and in short, the current organizational structure lacks the bandwidth for strategic program delivery. We simply do not have the staffing levels to meet the expectations of our community. We'll talk a little bit about our CIP first, and then we'll, we'll talk more about staffing in a moment. So what does our CIP include? Why is it currently driving this change? Our CIP includes 134 projects totaling $76.5 million across 21 funding sources. This breakdown shows a diverse mix of funding sources that make up our CIP, reflecting the city's commitment to doing the most with the least amount of resources available through years of careful planning and coordination, as well as to minimize impacts to the general fund, which is our most liquid fund for citywide operations. Looking back, several consistent challenges defined past CIP administration. There was no proactive project planning. Most efforts were reactive or triggered only after total failure. Projects weren't strategically tied to adopted master plans or long-term goals, and cross-departmental coordination was limited. Staffing shortages further exacerbated the timely delivery of infrastructure, and as a result, many projects were carried over from one fiscal year to the next without measurable progress. Past CIPs often also lacked comprehensive detail or clarity, and they didn't reflect a full five-year planning horizon, and in certain cases, timeliness had to stretch to 10 or even 15 years for utility CIP, which we are also working on as well, for longer-term projects such as reservoir replacement or major infrastructure in utilities. To address these longstanding challenges, we've implemented a more robust and structured, as well as accountable, CIP process. Monthly cross-departmental meetings have already started to promote alignment and momentum. Each CIP project is overseen by a designated project manager from start to finish, ensuring continuity, ownership, and consistency. Project managers receive formal training, and updates are entered into a centralized tracking sheet to keep visibility and progress at the forefront. CIP performance is now tied directly into employee evaluations, which supports accountability, career development, and cross-departmental collaboration. In addition, we are building a new CIP project-based document, as opposed to the current document that is before you. The new document will include all sources for each project on one line, and it will be much easier to identify the total funding by project, as well as to better track each project's progress every update that we provide to the council and the community. This structure is designed to deliver projects more efficiently, reduce costly rollovers, and keep our efforts strategically aligned with adopted master plans and long-term goals, all within a 360-degree intentional design framework. This isn't just about missing project deadlines, it's also about an organizational model that has not been given the tools to succeed. One of the things that we're also doing is looking at opportunities with the cross-collaboration amongst departments. So for example, if we have to put in a water mainline or a sewer mainline, and we have to, a street project maybe is normally two years out, we're bringing those two things together, all of those divisions. If there's other areas of opportunity, like we need to replace street trees, or we need to replace curb and gutter, we're bringing everything together all at once to ensure that we maximize our limited resources. What we're about to show you is highlighting a few key projects in each category of the CIP. Please note that this is not exhaustive and may not include projects that are, are in early design, but will be constructed the following fiscal year. We've grouped these projects into key categories to better show the scale, purpose, and investment across the entire city. And starting off, we'll go ahead and take a look at streets and roads. The streets and roads portion of the CIP includes 47 projects totaling approximately $33.7 million, targeting long-deferred improvements that have been years in the making. These funds have been deliberately set aside over time to ensure we're equipped to take on the scale and significance of these critical investments. First is Foothill Boulevard. This project will be, will reconstruct a major arterial within our city with pavement rehabilitation, utility coordination, and ADA improvements from Benson to Euclid. And we have Grove Avenue Rehab. This includes full roadway rehabilitation and utility improvements along Grove Avenue from Foothill to 15th Street. Next, we have 14th Street Rehab, and this project addresses pavement reconstruction, curb and gutter improvements, and drainage upgrades from Campus to Grove. Next, we have Mulberry Avenue Reconstruction. This is a complete reconstruction of Mulberry Avenue from Foothill to Pine. And the next, we have Highway Safety Improvement Program Traffic Signal Hardware Improvements, Cycle 11. This partially state-funded project will upgrade signal hardware and improve traffic safety at multiple intersections throughout the city. Next, we'll take a look at parks. Now that we've looked at the streets and roads, we'll look at park investments, and we, we aim to modernize recreational areas, enhance ADA access, and maximize use for all age groups. Looking ahead to fiscal year 2526, the CIP dedicates $4.5 million toward 23 park projects designed to modernize and enhance public spaces across the city. These efforts support our broader goal of improving accessibility, safety, and recreational value for all age groups. And please note that this was originally stated as $2.5 million in the previously posted version of the PowerPoint, and we have since updated that by cross-referencing all of our, our numbers. McCarthy Park is slated for, as the first item, for $716,000 recreational renovation in fiscal year 2526, funded through Quimby Funds to modernize and enhance community play areas. One thing I do want to notify the council, just make it clear to members of the public that may be watching this.
Damian, Shannon had a, Councilmember Miles had a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead and say what you're going to say, because I think you're going to say what I was going to ask. You go first.
Thank you, Councilmember Moss. So I just want to be very clear for anyone watching or, or looking at the record. Quimby Funds are funds that are paid for by developers for new projects when they are including residents or into, into the community. And so they're essentially for replacement or, or something new, open space acquisition. To be clear, these are funds that cannot be used for streets and roads. I want to make that very, very clear, because I think sometimes there's confusion when I hear from residents or constituents that might say, "Why are we putting money towards parks when we actually have streets and roads needs?" These are funds that are specifically restricted for parks and open space. You cannot use them for other purposes. You definitely cannot use them for streets and roads. And in addition to that, there are, there is essentially what we could, what we call a shot clock to, to use of these funds. You have a limitations, you're supposed to spend them within a certain period of time. You do not want to keep them in perpetuity and simply invest them. You can build them up over time, but there are limitations in terms of how long you should be building them up as a city. And so a lot of these projects you see in this PowerPoint presentation are Quimby restricted funds from developers that can only be used for parks and open space. And I just wanted to make sure that was very clear to anyone watching or, or listening tonight.
And I wanted to add on to what you stated, that these projects have to come before the council. So even though these are on the slides, or these are proposed, there would need to be community outreach to make sure that we're on target for what the community wants in these parks, and there'd have to be a little bit of footwork, and it's not just stating that this is exactly what's happening in any of these parks, and that all decisions will come back to the city council in real time when we get there, correct?
That is 100% correct. Each project will have community engagement to finalize the design and the amenities before we proceed with the full design and taking the project out to bid, and then bringing a contract before the city council. Those councilmembers in their districts will also be notified should they desire to attend those community meetings or community workshops, and that's how we will handle each of the parks as we look at design.
Okay, and the reason I raised my hand was on Slide 26, if we can go backwards a little bit. 1, 1, 26. When you were talking about...
Go back, 26.
Is that 26?
One more down.
You were talking about light fixtures or traffic signals?
Yes.
Is any of that traffic signal money, have we exhausted the roadway safety plan grant monies? Because there was a thorough report on that that was attached to money. Did any of that include traffic signals?
I'd have to confirm. I don't, I believe...
The one you called, that was for the yellow fixing around the lights, which has a bigger...
What specifically? Shannon, what specifically?
Well, sources, HSIP state funds, but there's also many, I thought, in the roadway safety, is it called roadway safety grant or plan that we were funded?
The HSIP is a grant. I think you're referring to the LRSP funding. That was, that money was used, I believe it was approximately $30,000, if I'm not mistaken, for the analysis when we did the plan and submitted it to Caltrans.
Okay, I thought it was to implement different things like around traffic signals, like the yellow around traffic signals, brighter LED light...
That's the HSIP.
It's just for highway safety, and you're thinking roadway safety.
Okay.
It's the same thing.
All right. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Just wanted to, that's what I wanted to say, to be clear. Just wanted to be sure. So the HS, the HS, sorry, thank you. The HSIP plan, that was, that was a plan that identified where we could make these improvements, and, but we still haven't funded that plan yet, correct?
It is funded. It's a 1.8 million grant, and then we had to pair it up with some local match of, I believe it was like $206,000 roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll continue if there's any other questions on that portion. So on, on Slide 29, Magnolia Park, one thing that we wanted to bring to your attention is, this actually is a project based on the funds coming in, is we're anticipating this actually, I received a clarification very recently, that we're looking at this primarily for fiscal year 2627, as opposed to fiscal year 2526, based upon the funds available. So that's just one note that we wanted to bring to your attention, that, that staff has brought to my attention very recently. And so that is in the actual document. And note too, that we will continue to work to always make sure that we clean up the, the CIP when we come to you either first quarter or mid-year, as well, as we continue to create that project-based document, where it's a lot easier to track one project, all sources. Right now, you have to kind of jump back and forth the way it's currently structured. So, but that is one minor note, is 2627 for Magnolia Park Rehabilitation for $725,000, and that's for parking lot rehabilitation and full replacement of the North Playground, funded through Park DIF. The next is Cabrillo Park.
For, for, Councilmember Moss, that's a question again.
So on the parking lot, I was wondering if we could have something come forward for every parking lot that's needed in all of our parks, clearly not Memorial Park, it was just done. But, you know, using money in this manner for Magnolia Park's parking lot, if we could get more of a master plan of, of what it costs to address all of our parks, because pretty much a lot of the parking lots are really bad, it's great to see that this money would go towards a parking lot.
That's in the, it is in the pavement master plan. That number for the parking lots is in the pavement master plan.
Okay.
So what was for parks, was the parking lots was like 26? I think it was like 26.
Our PCI for the parking lots was, was dismal. Bob, can you clarify what it was?
I believe you were correct, it was in the 20 range.
26 million.
That analysis...
The alleys were like 40, weren't they, and, and...
Yeah, that analysis was performed before we actually paid Memorial Park, so your PCI has come up a little bit in the parking lots.
Sure.
Because of the large effort in Memorial Park.
And we also did a street, the one behind, excuse me, the one on...
First Avenue.
First Avenue.
Correct.
Right, so it's still, the PCI would still be based on the exist, some of the existing ones would be, still be substandard.
Correct.
Existing ones.
Yeah.
We're aware of that. Okay, thank you. And certainly, James, Shannon, you got anything else?
Yeah.
James?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, I don't see on here, the Magnolia Park building itself has some issues of flooding, and the roof still has leaks and stuff, so I'm just wondering, I don't see that, I, I, I know it's, I'm in the weeds here, but I just want to make sure that doesn't fall off a list, because every time it rains, I don't know what happened when the contractor that repaired the center did the work. They've had issues for the last, what, I think 10 years or so.
Didn't they, didn't they recently just do the flooding issue? Jessica?
Yeah, we've been addressing, staff has been, operations staff has been checking on the roof with each of the rains that we've been having. They've been trying to address the exact locations, but we've been getting a handle on it and already fixing some of the damage that had happened in, in the interior.
Okay.
But as, as we know right now, there are not any more active leaks.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I know it was shut down four mold, and I would hate for it to start having that problem again. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anytime you got flat roofs, James, you're going to have nothing.
I know.
Flat roofs are the worst, aren't they?
Yes, we, any flat roof that's in the city, city billions, we've had to address, yeah, one or two every winter.[1798.88]
Okay.
We have 13, about 13 buildings, but many of them have flat roof sections. Even a little kiosk out here in the parking lot, we've had to address that one.
Jeez.
They're the worst. They're the worst.
Thank you.
Couple of things just wanted to mention, council, is if the project, generally the rule of thumb that we're looking at, we don't have an official policy, but it's general practice amongst many cities, if the project is over 25,000 and is capital in nature, that is typically when it will be listed, or if it's major repair in nature. If it's below that and it's handled by generally operations, you just heard that from staff, unless it's a full roof replacement, that would be on the CIP, but if it's not, that probably wouldn't necessarily make that threshold of that 25,000. So that's the best rule of thumb to look at for a CIP. And then Councilmember Moss, to answer your question, yes, we can certainly consider including those as part of our 360-degree design when we're making improvements. Just one clarification, I hadn't had a chance to check on sourcing since we had last spoke, but I did confirm we would not likely be able to use Quimby for those or ParkDIF, so it would either be a general fund, I'm not sure, I don't think RMRA or gas tax would be eligible. So we would have to probably look at seeing how creatively we can address that with general fund as well. So just wanted to put that disclosure as we look to make improvements across the board for a park, including the parking lots. Okay, moving forward, we have Cabrillo Park. We identified in fiscal year 2526, 90,000 in Quimby funds will go towards installing protective netting at Cabrillo Park to improve safety for players and spectators. We had some balls kind of going over into the, into certain areas, and that will help enhance that. On our next slide, slide 31, Memorial Park, we have pickleball courts here slash tennis courts. Memorial Park would see essentially the addition of new dedicated pickleball and tennis courts with upgraded servicing and striping to meet growing recreational demand, funded through Quimby fees. It's important to note that staff will conduct community meetings to solicit input on design in any new playground and construction amenities within all of our parks. And so I think that goes to the concern that was mentioned previously.
Damian, Councilmember Garcia has a question. Go ahead.
On Cabrillo Park, on the netting, is that just for one section of it, or is it in multiple areas?
That's going to be for two of the south, the fields that are facing north and south. It's going to cover wider than the actual goal area. We're expanding it just a little bit to protect that south parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have facilities. This section highlights key facility upgrades aimed at enhancing public safety.
Real quickly, I wanted to go back real quickly to Memorial Park pickleball tennis courts. Have we reached out, Jessica, to the high school in cooperation with their tennis courts up on 18th Street and their tennis courts at Upland High School? Have we discussed with them the potential to open to public?
We just spoke with the facilities director with the school district, actually, last Thursday, and they're very open to the idea of Pioneer Junior High and potentially converting those tennis courts to multi-use tennis and pickleball courts and giving us access to use those.
What was the apprehension from the high school? Was there any apprehension?
We haven't spoken to the high school, about the high school itself, just Pioneer Junior High.
I'll talk to Mike.
Okay, so no further questions in that section. We'll continue to facilities modernization.
So just to elaborate on Memorial Park, this would not be something that goes forward unless we do a community workshop, correct?
Absolutely.
Because the focus is supposed to be, I think, in an expanded playground, and there might be those residents that want to weigh in on reducing green space for concrete where with recreation offering pickleball on the basketball courts, I've understood it to not be as attended as maybe thought. So if we're going to put efforts into this plan and move it forward, I think this is one that we need to make sure we even want to exhaust that avenue.
Yes, this would be an example of where we would have a community workshop to solicit input from surrounding residents within a certain radius, and as well as generally open up to all of our residents.
Where did this come from? Because this is the first I had seen it, was in your PowerPoint, this discussion. So where did this project come from?
Rudy, you got any comments on that?
Yes, I did talk to staff today, and I told them that I would rather wait till after and till the end of everything today, and then give them my question. I'm going to go through the whole...
But did you bring this forward at one time, the idea of pickleball courts?
Well, it was more of a thought, like maybe, this was when pickleball first started and a new thing, and I believe Ralph Cavalo and myself had talked about it and was trying to figure out where we could do something like that and how much money it would cost, and didn't really go anywhere.
Okay, just, I knew, I know you and I had spoke at one time about it. You had mentioned it to me, so I want to make sure that you had some input on maybe where it came from, or how it just, or how maybe it just generically just came through, you know?
Well, I did speak with Jessica about the presentation, and I told her I would say some questions to her at the end, and since I'm already talking, I'm going to go ahead and ask her, what is the demand like for pickleball? I know we had a trial over on the basketball court, try it out and see how it took off or whatnot, and what was the feedback you got on that, Jessica?
So we were actually getting a good attendance as we were trying to pilot having pickleball programming, pickleball offerings. The challenge was the competition between basketball offerings and pickleball offerings. The regular basketball players were not happy that we were competing on their time, in a sense, so we had to trim that down. But I can speak to, you know, the recreation industry as a whole. It's no longer a trend. Pickleball is here to stay, and it's something that is in high demand across the inland empire, across the country, really, and we have, you know, our adjacent cities, our neighboring cities have multiple offerings. Our closest one would be Red Hill Park in the city of Rancho Cucamonga, and it is overflowing on a daily basis. So this is definitely a need to have in the community.
Is our residents interested in it, or are we finding residents from Rancho Cucamonga, Ontario, Claremont? We've seen the demand in Upland, which I'd like to know if there is the strong demand in Upland for it.
We haven't done an official survey on that. We have gotten residents that have spoken with us about it, but as far as actual data, I wouldn't be able to give that hard information right now.
Rudy, would you be against us doing some sort of a survey about that?
Oh, absolutely not. I would now also ask, like, would it, if we had the pickleball courts up there in Pioneer Junior High, would that relieve?
Meet the needs.
Yeah, would it meet the needs, or would we need Memorial Park as well? So like, I'm totally open to have some residents discuss this with us and let us know what they want and take a survey or whatnot. I don't know how you're going to do it, but yes, I'm open to that.
And same as tennis courts, because is the demand, are we having that kind of a demand?
I can't speak to the demand for tennis courts for drop-in play, but I do know that we've had a lot of recreation classes, tennis classes, that strong desires, that's what the big push was for Pioneer Junior High, was for us to be able to offer our contract classes. But I definitely believe that if we were to have access to the tennis courts and pickleball courts, we would be able to offer the programming.
I'd like you to reach out to Claremont Club and see if their memberships have dropped, to see if they have seen a show. If they can give you a survey of the last five, 10 years, how they've seen memberships dropping for tennis playing, I think that'd be an indicator, because if they're seeing a dramatic drop, because I know people who used to play that don't play anymore. So I'm wondering if, as we're doing this, the great idea is we want to make sure that those fees are used effectively, and we just don't end up with some empty tennis courts, you know, six, eight hours, 10 hours, 15 hours a day.
Absolutely.
And so they could be used for something different, maybe.
Absolutely.
Mayor and council too, and one way maybe to take a tiered approach is, you know, I was mentioning to Jessica and City Manager Blay and I had discussed about, it's really a small investment if we try out Pioneer Junior High, we're really just talking about striping. Maybe there's some addition of lighting down the road based upon demand, but we could take an incremental approach as well and kind of try that out as kind of how I codified as a pilot project, and then get a real sense of demand at that location, which would tell us in terms of demand throughout the community for our park spaces as well. So that's something that we've talked about. That's why we've already initiated the conversation on Pioneer Junior High is to examine that and get that all rolling.
Get a survey. And Councilmember Garcia, go ahead.
Really quick, as you're exploring this, and pilot or not, it'd be great, depending on the demand for overflow and all that, maybe select parks within each district that have the space to create a court for, so there's not always just this backlog of people, and it's just something to look at, you know? Like, I know Cabrillo has space in the back that we can easily do that as well, too, but just something to think about.
And that's why it's that important for those surveys, I think. Okay? Go ahead, Rudy.
I don't want to take this off the table or get rid of it. I want to keep it around, maybe put it in the door, but, and then see what, how it goes. Like, if we need Pioneer Junior High and we need more, there's more demand, then maybe we could start looking more into something at Memorial Park because of the funding. But I don't want it to go away.
Now, I think, Rudy, I think that Damian made that clear, in case you didn't, that's what he's doing. They want to do incremental, see how the response is. Okay?
Also, you can check with Bad Hill, too. They turned their tennis courts into pickleball courts as well.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it's going to...
All right, thank you. All right.
And one thing, Mayor, and members of the council, that we've also just started to discuss internally, you know, we had mentioned previously, we have all these master plans guiding how we want to use these funds. What we don't have is a parks and open space master plan. And Mayor, kind of to the point that you're making about survey work and reaching out to the community, that would be an opportunity where we work with a consultant to kind of outline what I think I'm hearing from all of the council in terms of looking at amenities. You know, Councilmember Garcia had talked about, for example, looking at other parks as well. That comprehensive process through community workshops, et cetera, will really kind of guide the future, not just in the immediate future, but long-term, as well as help us in terms of securing grant funding. So that might be something we might want to consider down the road.
And we've got to be clear, though, about the funding for it, because, you know, someone might say, we want this here, but we just got done putting this in.
Yep.
And we don't have the funding to do that. So it's got to be really made clear to the residents, just like everything else we're doing, we talked about these capital improvements, it's got to be clear that we can do this because we have the funding allocation. We can't do that because we don't have the funding allocation. And that's really got to be made clear throughout this whole capital improvement plan. We have budgets for this, we don't have budgets for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, going back to facilities, slide 33, for fiscal year 2526, we have 14 facility-related projects being programmed totaling approximately 2.9 million. These investments support expanded police department operations, infrastructure resilience at the animal shelters, staff-focused improvements at Public Works, and sustainability through EV charging stations.
Excuse me, Damian, I got to call a quick recess. We got to bring Councilmember Zunica back online. He's been disconnected, okay? Just take a short recess, it's not going to, don't go anywhere, folks. We're not...
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
All right, Rudy, we're back. You there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, we're going to start. Go ahead, Damian.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to go ahead and go to slide 34, the second floor of PD. This $240,000 ARPA-funded project will reconfigure the second floor of the police department to create much-needed administrative space and improve internal workflows. Next, we have an animal shelter generator to ensure animal care operations can continue uninterrupted during power outages. The project will install a dedicated backup generator system at the shelter. The next project is Public Works Charging Stations at the Corporate Yard. This $275,000 project will install new electric vehicle charging stations at the Public Works Yard, supporting the city's fleet transition to cleaner technology, and is largely grant-funded by SoCal Edison. Next project is the Public Works Locker Room. This new locker room will provide Public Works field staff with a dedicated space to clean up, store gear, and transition between shifts, which is an essential upgrade that supports health, safety, and daily operations, and is consistent with other cities' public works departments, particularly those with utilities. The next category we'll talk about is water. For fiscal year 2526, we have 43 water-related capital projects totaling $31.5 million, which will focus on strengthening our infrastructure from treatment plant upgrades to main replacements and critical facility improvements. First project is our supervisory control and data acquisition, also known, also known as SCADA. This $2.1 million project will upgrade the city's SCADA, also known, excuse me, which collects real-time data from pumps, tanks, valves, and sensors throughout the city to monitor and control water infrastructure and operations remotely.
Damian, so they know, this is not uncommon for the SCADA system to be upgraded in all. Is that true, Nicole, that most of the water facility authorities and water facilities in the area having to do this, aren't they? Would that be fair to say?
That's fair to say. Over time, the technology becomes obsolete.
Yeah. So I want residents to know that how, you know, they're always worried about our water, and that we put a lot of effort into our water, because we got 30, you know, $31.5 million in, in 43 water projects alone in this city.
That's, that is fair to say. Over, over time, a lot of the existing technology becomes obsolete, so the cost of replacement is, is for the size of, of a particular system becomes too onerous, so you end up having to do a full-scale upgrade. You're also able to optimize your existing system better and have internal supply reliability with a SCADA improvement project.
And you're seeing this at other, other treatment facilities, it's not just unique to Upland.
Absolutely.
Everywhere this is going on.
Everywhere. This type of technology is, is pretty much required to, to function, to move water, to move wastewater. Various types of SCADA systems exist for multiple utilities.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Carlos. Got a question, go ahead, Carlos.
Just, just really quick. When was the last time we actually updated this?
SCADA, the SCADA system?
Yeah.
It's pretty old. Do we have a, their staff is saying decades.
Twenty years.
Twenty years old.
The reason, the reason I'm bringing this up is that this isn't like luxury, this is a need that we have to deal with.
No, this is absolutely.
So that's why I want to make sure people know just how old this thing is, that needs to be replaced or.
That's why, that's why the Water Facility Authority's going through the same thing, aren't they? WFAA over on 17th, they're going through the same thing over there.
IUAA.
IUAA also. So it, it seems like all the ones, one of Chino Basin, you know, all the ones that they serve, I know. But it's, you're gonna probably see it in NWD, or to see it everywhere, the SCADA system upgrades and changes out, it's happening, so, yeah.
Yeah. And, and a lot of this, too, allows us to create reports for compliance. As you've seen through legislative bills, there's been more and more compliance requirements related specifically to water. And, and the best way to, I would think about this, is using technology to maximize limited resources, which we'll show in a moment, how limited our resources are. So it allows us essentially to become as efficient as possible by using all available means of technology that's out there. And so the SCADA is definitely a large project that will help us be more efficient in delivering water to, to our customers. Okay, so obviously, as I mentioned before, the project will bring our SCADA into the 21st century by enhancing automation, real-time monitoring, and operational reliability across water facilities, and is funded through a water bond. Next is we have San Antonio Water Treatment Plant. With $3.1 million in water bond funding, this project will upgrade critical components at the San Antonio Canyon Water Treatment Plant to ensure long-term water quality, regulatory compliance, and operational efficiency. Our next is Foothill Water Main Replacement. As part of the larger Foothill Boulevard project, this is what I was mentioning earlier, we try to have economies of scale in 360-degree design. This 300, this $3.9 million investment is consistent with that approach, in that we seek to do projects in parallel or adjacent at the same time to maximize beautification and limited resources. This project allows the water team to proactively replace needed aging infrastructure along Foothill Boulevard. Our next is Plant 6. This project will deliver targeted upgrades to Plant 6's infrastructure and surrounding site, improving operational efficiency, safety, and long-term reliability with funding from the water bond as well. If there are no questions, we'll move on to Sewer. For our CIP Sewer, we have, for fiscal year 2526, the city is advancing nine sewer infrastructure projects totaling $2.6 million, with key efforts focused on citywide rehabilitation and targeted manhole installations to improve access and system performances. Our first is slide 46, Citywide Sewer Rehab, building on work already underway. This year, we're adding another $375,000 to continue restoring and reinforcing sewer lines citywide, extending the system life, and staying ahead of costly failures before they surface. Our next project is the Campus Manhole Install Project. This $374,000 project fills a gap in our sewer access network, installing a new manhole along Campus Avenue to improve system maintenance, emergency response, and long-term reliability. Our next is slide 48, and one of the things we want to point out is, you know, our team. As you can see, we have an expansive list of projects dedicated to improving our city, and we only highlighted a few in the CIP, but as I previously mentioned, we have 134 projects, but our ability to deliver is only as strong as the team behind it. Each of these projects requires long-term planning, dedicated project management, cross-departmental collaboration, and a, and a structure built to support all. That's why we looked, we took a closer look at our current team structure and how it compares to peer agencies. What we found made it very clear, we must evolve in order to meet the infrastructure needs of our community, both now and well into the future, and we need a team that is mission-focused and built to deliver. Strengthening this structure will ensure a more proactive, efficient approach to project execution, as well as position Upland to keep pace with the community's needs. Our next is the staff organizational challenges. We'll, we'll take a closer look at our current structure and how it supports or limits our ability to meet today's infrastructure demands, based on what we've already presented. In 2022, a third-party assessment was conducted and identified more than 200 recommendations for the Public Works Department, most critical gaps, supervisory oversight, outdated inventories, and lack of proactive maintenance strategy. Even with recent improvements, our ability to execute is limited by our very structure. We also, as well, when walking in, City Manager Blay had asked me to, to do an assessment based upon some of my background in managing and supporting multiple public works departments, as well as including nearly a decade as a city manager overseeing a municipal utility. And from day one, it was clear that there were structural and staffing gaps within the department. I identified that we need a structure that's aligned with Upland's current capital delivery goals and increasing regulatory demands. The recommendation to reorganize is rooted in experience and, and what I've observed firsthand in even just the short time that I've been here, in order to be better positioned to deliver projects that the council and the community wants, as well as at the scale and efficiency that the community deserves. We'll now talk about the necessary reorganization. Building on these findings, this slide outlines the core constraints that make reorganization not just helpful, but absolutely necessary to deliver infrastructure. So here's why it's necessary. Structurally, the department operates with a flattened management model, which we'll show in a moment, that offers limited supervisory oversight. There's no centralized accountability for capital project delivery, and we simply don't have the internal capacity for inspections, vendor compliance, or effective project coordination. Even with recent improvements, the volume and complexity of projects today are unsustainable under the current model. And the reality is, aging infrastructure continues to go under address due to staffing levels that fall below industry standards, as well as through attrition. So taking a quick look at utilities, we can look at our Public Works team as two divisions under one roof, utilities and general public works. As we look closer at the utilities team, their core responsibilities include delivering water, sewer, and stormwater services to nearly 80,000 residents. I want to pause for a moment just to emphasize the importance of that and the responsibility of that. Not every city has all three utilities that it's responsible for managing. It's a, it's a, it's a large responsibility, some would say it's a large burden. It is one certainly that I think the staff and the council shoulder, and we continue to make strides where we can, but we definitely have some shortfalls in terms of the level of, and quantity of, of the staffing that we need in order to continue to keep pace. So the staffing that we're looking at currently is 37 full-time employees. Despite these, these teams' efforts, the scale and complexity of the system has outpaced current staffing levels, creating challenges that impact both service delivery and capital project execution that could lead to significant safety implications for our utility systems. We'll take a little quick look at, this is the current org chart today. What you're seeing here is a team and, and a highly specialized one at that, that's responsible for the daily operations of our reservoirs, booster stations, sewer system, and treatment processes, while also supporting the delivery of water-related capital projects. While the staff are highly capable, this structure lacks the depth and redundancy needed to absorb workload fluctuations, also build institutional knowledge, which is incredibly important in running a utility, and succession planning or scale effectively as our, as our regulatory and capital demands grow. To, to look at this, also, we, we did the same thing we did with the roadway network, is we've never really done benchmarking to kind of look at how, where do we stand against our, our peer agencies that also operate three-tier utilities? To better understand what an appropriately-resourced utilities team looks like, we reviewed staffing data from nearby municipal agencies that manage sewer water and storm drain, and what we found reinforces the challenge we just discussed. Coming into the city, I, I believed it was approximately 20 or 30 percent, you'll see numbers that are much larger than that. On average, these cities that you see here, staff a .85 utility employees per 1,000 residents. Upland currently sits at just .46. This means we're operating at nearly half the staffing capacity of our peers, yet expected to meet the same regulatory requirements, deliver capital projects, and respond to public service needs with the same consistency. I do want to point out, we actually list the sourcing here, because sometimes these things can be subject to a lot of scrutiny and review. We looked at the annual consolidated financial reports of each of these cities, as well as their budgets, to verify that, in fact, this was the documented, audited figures from each of these agencies. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and we point that out as the sourcing material at the bottom as well. Visually, you can see where we stand here on this slide. Upland falls noticeably below not just the average, but even the next closest city in terms of utility staffing per capita. That gap becomes even more clear when we quantify it. As you can see through the comparative analysis findings, Upland is operating at 46 percent below the regional average, not, not the high mark or any other agency, just the average, when it comes to utility staffing. That translates to a shortage of approximately 31 full-time employees. In other words, we would need to nearly double our current full-time staffing just to reach the average of these three-tier municipal agencies. Even when compared only to our immediate neighbors, Ontario, Chino, and Pomona, we're still 29 percent below the average, or a shortfall of 15 FTEs. In either case, the gap is substantial, and it directly impacts our ability to maintain infrastructure, respond to service needs, and deliver capital projects on time and within budget. Moving forward, we have Public Works Operations. I asked staff, based upon my assessment, to take a look at the same type of data and, and look at these other agencies. And when we looked at the day-to-day care of the city's built environment, we look at our Public Works operations to address our streets, parks, facilities, signage, and urban forest. Again, it's a very large responsibility area, based on the size of our city as well. That scope includes maintaining 210 miles of streets, nearly 38 miles of alleys, 13 parks, 13 facilities, and more than 32,000 public trees. It's a wide-ranging and significant workload handled by 41 full-time employees, 29 of whom are dedicated to field operations, with the rest supporting administration, engineering, and program coordination. Here's the current org chart related to Public Works Operations. It reflects a small but dedicated team that has a large responsibility area. However, similar to utilities, this structure lacks the depth and supervisory support needed to keep pace with service demands, ensure consistent coverage, and proactively deliver capital improvements and maintain quality of life in our community. As our infrastructure footprint grows and regulatory requirements increase, this structure simply does not offer the capacity or flexibility to meet those evolving needs.
Damian, when you mentioned regulatory compliance, is that normally state mandates, would you call it? Was that fair to say, state mandates?
Most of them are state mandates. Sometimes there's, there might be some federal requirements as well, but line share is state mandate.
Are most of them unfunded?
Most of them are unfunded.
So the state comes out and says, you have to start doing this right now, and provides no additional, no additional revenues to offset the costs of?
That is correct. A, a perfect example is SB 1383, which requires food waste recycling.
Correct.
Which is an unfunded mandate that's required upon the city. That has required us to also look at some discussions with our waste hauler, Burt Tech, to examine that, and as well as how do we fund some of these requirements with respect to unfunded state mandates, when you see before you, as I've just presented, already deficits? And so those, those are causing conversations to occur to address those state unfunded mandates.
And, and we get really no response from, so we meet with assembly members, and we meet with the state senate, these are the issues that we need to bring forward to them, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. There is a test mechanism, Mayor, for, for submitting. However, we're talking years and years of response delay from the state, and even then, my experience has been not many cities will get reimbursement funding.
And most certainly in this, with the, with the shortfalls that we have at the state levels today.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you can see here through slide 59, our org chart, and we are looking to enhance this, and I'll share in a moment the revised of what we're looking to change. But to, to go forward, you could see the benchmarking. This is the same exercise we did with utilities. We looked at how our staffing compares to these cities, and on average, these agencies staff about 1.35 Public Works employees per 1,000 residents. Upland is currently at just .51, less than half of the regional average. This gap has real consequences. It limits our ability to proactively maintain infrastructure, support our CIP, and meet the service levels that residents expect. Some illustrative slide here is next. This gives you an order of magnitude of what we're looking at, right here as well, comparatively speaking. And it's just like with utilities, that shortfall has a direct impact on service delivery, project execution, and long-term infrastructure care. This also, too, becomes very clear when we quantify this data. When we break it down, the numbers are hard to ignore. Upland is operating at 62 percent below the regional average. Again, this is just the average for general public work staffing of other agencies. That's a shortage of about 67 full-time employees, more than double our current full-time employee staffing.
Damian, could you go back one slide?
Yes.
I want people to be clear and look at Redlands. Redlands, I believe, is about a population the size of ours, am I correct?
They are 73,000, sir.
Okay, we're about the same.
We're about 80,000.
We're at almost 80.
We're about, just about 80.
Right, so Redlands was, back in the day, socio-economic, about the same as Upland. They have a university, they have Ezra, they have a parking structure along the freeway. This is an example that's really important for residents to see, this Redlands versus Upland. And when people used to come into this valley, there was a couple of choices of where you wanted to live, and believe it or not, it was when you came down over the hill from the valley, it was Glendora, Upland, or Redlands. And I'm somewhat shocked to see Redlands number at, as high as it is on Public Works. I really am just, to me, that's just a kick in the teeth for us to realize that, that that's a big difference for our two cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So when we quantify this, we, we can see here the, the figures. We're looking at Upland operating at 62 percent below the regional average for general public work staffing. That's a shortage of about 67 full-time employees, and close to double our current full-time employee staffing. Even when compared only to neighboring cities like Ontario, Chino, and Pomona, we're still 63 percent below the average, translating to a shortfall of more than 70 full-time positions. So one of the things about data is, sometimes folks might say, well, well, you have this in there, and that might be an outlier, and we recognize that. And so even though we're confident in our numbers with respect to each of these pulling from their budgets and their actvers, I just wanted to take a moment to say that even if you were to remove Ontario, there is still a shortfall of 43 FTEs, and we are 51 percent lower compared to the average when removing Ontario, and 16 FTEs when removing them from the regional of local cities. So that's a 20, 28 percent difference. So again, removing Ontario, you're still 51 percent lower and 28 percent lower by moving, removing Ontario. These numbers confirm what we've been feeling in the field and seeing throughout our community for years. Our current structure does not match the scale of the services we're expected to provide. In terms of the analysis, we've essentially tried to combine these to show you what the order of magnitude for the department, just as a standalone department. Compared to the regional average, we're short by approximately 31 positions in utilities and 67 in public, general public works. That's a combined staffing shortfall of nearly 100 full-time employees. This is more than a statistical gap, it's a structural challenge that limits our ability to maintain infrastructure, meet street, meet service expectations for all infrastructure, and deliver the projects our community relies upon. So, one, one step in the right direction, I, I call it our first step in the right direction, as we're, we're looking to address this, we'll go to the next slide, is our proposed reorganization. This reorganization focuses on three core goals: strengthening leadership, improving project delivery, and meeting regulatory and service demands more efficiently. It also focuses on structure, stability, and customer service. It introduces deputy directors and a dedicated engineering manager positions that provide the oversight, coordination, and technical capacity we've been missing. It enhances our ability to deliver CIP projects proactively rather than reactively, and it creates space for better compliance, stronger customer service, and more consistent facilities management. In short, it aligns our structure with the reality of our community workload and sets the foundation for long-term operational sustainability. Some key roles that we'll highlight, just briefly on some of these positions. The first step in this reorganization is bringing key leadership roles to provide the oversight, coordination, and forward planning that have been missing. A deputy director for utilities will oversee water, sewer, and storm drain infrastructure, ensuring projects stay on time and aligned with long-term compliance and funding goals. A deputy director for public works will lead the delivery of projects for streets, parks, and facilities, guiding everything from ADA compliance to mobility improvements, while also improving customer service and transparency. Adding a new engineering and advanced planning manager in utilities, this is a new division in utilities we have never had, to be more forward-thinking, helps us move projects from vision to construction, making sure design and permitting are proactively managed and ready to go, as, as opposed to the current philosophy, which is, as run till failure. These roles are foundational, and they allow us to operate in a more forward-thinking and proactive manner, and not just on, on day-to-day operations, which is what we're currently doing. In addition to senior leadership, the reorganization introduces specialized roles designed to close operational gaps and improve responsiveness. A dedicated traffic engineer will oversee the city's 89 signalized intersections, support long-range mobility goals, and manage traffic safety programs with a proactive, compliance-driven approach, which will also free up current CIP engineering staff to complete more projects. Just to give an example, council, my prior agency, a population of 53,000, we had a trap, full-time traffic engineer, we had a full-time traffic tech, we had a traffic intern, and we also had contracts to support specific projects throughout the city, contract traffic engineers. And here, we only have a, a part-time traffic engineer for a city of this size. So, again, we believe this is a start in the right direction, but that just kind of gives you an order of magnitude of how, how big of a difference in terms of staffing and, and putting folks in the right places and, and supporting the, the operations of the city.
And, and we did contract out some of this, and, and it was just not working, was it?
No, I, I would say it wasn't. I mean, my first week, I had a couple of projects where I went to folks' homes based upon councilmember inquiry to... upon councilmember inquiry to address real-time concerns. These are intersections where we had a large amount of traffic incidents, and we, they, I was told that we don't work on those days. And we didn't get...
Employees, these are outside contractor...
These are outside, these are outside contractors.
This was a consulting firm that we were trying to get to work with us, but they were incapable of handling the load or any, any portion of it on certain days. They worked two days a week.
Correct.
Yeah. The other days, they were not available, didn't return calls either.
Correct.
All right, so this is actually more beneficial to move it in-house, correct?
Correct, and we'll show towards the fiscal impact, towards the end, Mayor, that will demonstrate that you will get, I would imagine, 100 probably percent more productivity, 80% more productivity, based upon essentially a close to similar cost.
All right, thank you very much.
We also have a policy and legislative affairs manager, which will focus on advancing infrastructure priorities, both by tracking legislation and securing external funding from state, federal, and other agencies to support our infrastructure projects. There's a lot of money out there that we're not, we believe that we can leverage by having matching grants. You just heard engineer Bob Critchfield talk about matching on different projects, maintenance of effort. And city manager Blay and I are working with staff also to create a new system for securing additional funding, and so there's some exciting things to come there. This position will help support that. An operations customer service specialist will streamline how service calls are tracked, dispatched, and resolved, improving resident experience and giving our field teams more room to focus on execution. We are also looking at demoing a new Public Works app as a part of that process that we are currently working underway to improve customer service. Together, all of these roles fill longstanding voids and ensure our team is equipped to serve the community more efficiently and effectively. Here is the proposed reorganization chart for utilities. As you can see here, we have an introduction of deputy director position, some minor reclassifications, the community information specialist position for providing information on some of the things that we're working on. The far left is what you see as a new division that does not currently exist in utilities to do advanced planning and engineering work. And then all the way to the right, you see a government and public affairs manager position is the new position that we believe will reap significant dividends in terms of regional, state, and federal funding. Next slide. This is the proposed reorganization for Public Works. This, as you can see as well, we have a deputy director focused on streets, parks, facilities, and mobility, infrastructure, along with new support roles that strengthen engineering, traffic, safety, and customer service. One thing I do want to point out is these deputy directors will, are what I would consider working deputy directors, in that they are actually project-managing CIP projects, since we have a backlog, they will be taking on projects as well, in addition to supervisor, supervisory duties. This structure ensures that capital projects, routine maintenance, and resident-facing services all have dedicated oversight and capacity, and it's a much more proactive model designed to improve internal coordination, increase service reliability, and accelerate the project delivery I just mentioned. So now we go to fiscal impact. We took a close lens, working closely with city manager's office and finance. Naturally, any organizational change comes with cost considerations, but this plan was built with fiscal responsibility in mind. Across all funds, the proposed changes result in a salary and benefits increase of just over $923,000. However, when we look at the general fund specifically, we actually see a net reduction of nearly $19,500, thanks to how these positions are being strategically funded through frozen vacancies and position reallocations throughout the department. On top of that, we're also eliminating two consulting contracts, which we spoke about briefly earlier, one for GIS support and one for traffic engineering, $150,000 of which is savings to the general fund by the elimination of those two contracts. And this collectively results in a net general fund savings of $169,500 for this reorganization plan before you tonight. On the utility side, increases are already covered by the 4% CPI adjustment previously approved by council, so no water rate increases are needed to justify those costs. And these savings don't just offset costs, they represent a more efficient and stable structure for the department while enhancing the customer service and project delivery. In closing, staff respectfully recommends that the council review the proposed reorganization and capital alignment strategy for the Public Works Department and provide direction on how to proceed. I also wanted to take, next slide, I also wanted to take a brief moment to say thank you to the staff who worked with, with me so closely on putting together all of this information in a short period of time. This was truly a team effort from the city manager's office to finance to HR and all the Public Works support staff. We wouldn't have been able to put this comprehensive PowerPoint together without everyone's support, so thank you. And that concludes the presentation for tonight, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Moss.
Okay, first of all, just wow.
Yeah.
It's a lot of information, great information, and gives me a lot of hope for the forward movement of the city. I want to thank you all for the input and context that you've given us, and being able to have the PowerPoint before the meeting is great. This is just the educational component that a council or staffer, city manager needs in navigating the public and being able to present what our needs are and how we're going to accomplish those needs with really not affecting the general fund, so thank you on that. I did want to go over, you included in this for tonight, the CIP five-year plan, and you have it on page numbered, and on page two, there's an allocation here, it says citywide crack seal slurry, and you have requested 500,000. I'm just curious, is that for main thoroughfares, or will that be for neighborhoods?
Wherever it's needed.
That money could be used for residential streets or main thoroughfares, however, when you look at the pavement type and the distresses, it's really only suitable for your residential areas. The traffic loading on our arterials and collectors is, is too high really for that type of treatment.
And I know we haven't really had any funding for our neighborhoods for slurry seal, except for little patch jobs here and there. How would the list for the neighborhoods be compiled on need? Is it equitable through the city, or is it going to come off the roadway pavement plan for what neighborhood you're going to address? Because it's not a whole lot of money.
No, it's not a whole lot of money. It's funded through the gas tax mainly, and it's really only for streets that are considered in relatively good condition, meaning the PCI is, you know, really up there above a 65, you know, plus. You start getting below that, there's a lot more crack seal. Sometimes we'll go in and we'll actually do some localized remove and replacement, and then do a crack and a slurry seal on top. That type of treatment is mainly for streets that are in relatively good condition already.
So it's trying to preserve what we have so we don't backslide, so to speak. However, without any revenue generation coming into the city in a significant amount of money, it's going to be very hard to address any neighborhood that's below that PCI, correct?
With that type of treatment, yes.
Okay. And then on page five of 13, this is the first time I've heard of this project, so I'm curious. Arrow route widening Montevista to Central Avenue at 1.115 under street and traffic facilities. Can you touch briefly on why we need to widen that area of the roadway?
Yeah, there's the Army Corps channel that travels underneath that roadway just east of Montevista Avenue, and in order to make that a two-lane highway through there, that bridge structure needs to be widened out. And so it would require the US Army Corps engineers permitting, and then design plans in, you know, going forward.
Why is that brought forward right now? What is the need for needing to do that?
It's, it's only brought forward in the terms of a design aspect, not construction, and the need is, it's actually a bottleneck in the city and is part of our roadway plan in the future with the development that's takes, took place in the area. There was a residential development, and you have the Claremont Colleges, you know, expanding, and it's actually also on SBCTA's arterial program. So there is a chance the city can get some reimbursement through that program for that work.
So is the million dollars allocated, it will be needed to do just the design aspect so that we can catalog moving forward for a plan?
To do the construction, you're looking at over $2 million. The design aspect is probably closer to $200,000.
Okay, so what if in the future we were able to put, say, more housing, because there's housing on the south side of the street, and then there's a flood basin, and then there's more over in that area? So say, in the future, if we were able to build housing, wouldn't that be something that a developer, possibly in an agreement, could look at for construction on that roadway if that was proposed in the right zoning?
Yeah, if you were to build housing there, certainly it could be put forward on part of a development agreement for conditions of approval, but on the south side, there is the Upland Basin, which is a huge flood control basin that actually accepts our stormwater flows from just about the entire west end of the city. So detailed analysis would really need to be performed in great detail to see if that's even feasible to put housing there.
Okay.
That, it's also a jurisdictional dam recognized by the Army Corps because of an outlet onto the San Antonio Channel. So development there would be difficult, if not possibly impossible.
Okay, thank you.
One area that we're looking to do is also update our development impact fees, because we have projects like this that come up from time to time that we don't have funding for necessarily, or at least the entire portion, and it is a perfect example where if it provides access, it doesn't have to be immediate necessarily, but it provides access in general, is a general benefit to the community. It is something that we can include, so facilities, parks, you name it. We're looking to capture more of this by part of this exercise tonight. Use this document as essentially a guiding document for when we update our development impact fees, as well as any CFDs that we establish going forward. Anyone else before I go?
Any, anyone else before I go? Go ahead, Cowers.
So based on a new reorg, I'm looking at nine new positions, correct?
Yes, I believe it's nine. GIS is already funded, but okay. The other two are reclassifications. I would say seven to nine, because some of them are currently part-time, or excuse me, they will remain part-time positions, and some of them are reclassifications as opposed to new positions. So it, depending on how you look at it, could be seven to nine.
So, so when I look at the chart, and the question that's going to come up is, I'm going to talk about the five years I've been here in council, not prior to that, okay? So in the five years, one of, one of the biggest things that I've always talked about is the accountability factor, right? So we, we obviously don't have folks checking in on work, I've given you the example of potholes, right? If there's, if there's a company that we've hired filling in a pothole here, but there's one three inches away, they won't touch that, they'll just move on. Same thing, I think, with the landscape thing, it happened a lot of times too. They were not being held accountable for the things that we're paying for and not doing. And I know part of the problem has been folks in certain areas, in certain positions, that have not really followed through with that. My question to you is, two, two parts to it. One is, how are these new positions going to actually benefit the residents? Their supervisory roles, their director roles, one. And two, with these positions on there, how much of an actual cost to the city are we going to take?
So can you say the second question again?
So with this, let's go with the seven number versus the seven versus nine, right?
Yes.
With seven new positions, including the directors, the question has been asked to me about what is this going to cost us, what is it going to cost the general fund in filling in this position? Keep in mind, we still have to do retirement and all that good stuff, with person, all that stuff. So what is that number look like in adding this new staffing to the project?
Sure, I'll, if it's okay, I'll start with that one.
Please.
So what we're looking at effectively is about $169,000 in annual savings to the general fund. You have, that's a net savings over your current costs today. That's between this reallocation and elimination of contracts, some of which are heavily funded by the general fund. It is a $923,000 cost, however, it's, it's more of an exercise of looking at your existing resources as, as well as the existing water rate that was already applied, and applying them more efficiently by looking holistically at the tournament. That was how we got, that's how we use those two assessments to arrive at what you see before you today. But to simplify and answer your question is, what will it cost the general fund? Our most liquid fund is $169,000, $169,500 in savings per year.
That's in savings, but with seven, seven employees on there, I have to figure that that figure, that's what I'm looking at. What is that figure number? Not the savings?
It's $923,000 in total for all of the staffing changes.
For the new proposed ones.
With the new proposed ones.
Okay.
And large part are funded by restricted funds, water, sewer. You also have some gas tax. You also have them being charged off to some CIP projects like existing staff. So it really depends on the nature of the position. There's salary splits for each position that's been detailed and working in consultation with, with finance. But $923,000 total, and, and then, and then there's $169,000 savings in general fund compared to, compared to today.
And have we looked at current staff? I've got to imagine you have really amazing people that can be promoted up versus hiring new folks. Have we looked at those options, and then filling in the gap with, with folks that are out on the field as well too?
Into staffing personnel, which I can't...
I'm asking about the positions.
No, I'm saying, he can't tell you if he's going to promote people from within.
No, I'm just saying, have we looked at it? I'm not saying if he's going to promote it, just...
Well, I'm just saying, well, that's, I think that's what the concept of employment is always about, but I don't think he can be specific of who he's, of course he's going to, am I right? You always look at your internal staff, correct?
We always do a full evaluation.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That's it. Nothing specific on that.
Yeah, we do, we always do a full evaluation, we look at each position. It is, it is something that certainly we need to look at. We do need folks to fill these positions that are, that are experienced in these areas, and so that's an area that we definitely will be looking at more closely if, should the council approve the reorganization. To, in terms of what it will do, it will provide better accountability. Councilmember Gracie, you kind of had mentioned about maybe certain things not being done. You know, looking at the expectation, so I'll give an example. We don't, we don't have necessarily a striping plan. There's, there's many plans we haven't had in place, and so I'm a big believer in getting master plans, making sure that they're living documents, we're looking at them on a regular basis. We have weekly division manager meetings. It's a whole sea change right now in Public Works that's going on already. However, there needs to be more support to mentor and guide all of the staff, as well as supervise those staff, and make sure that we are looking at every opportunity to where we can leverage existing resources, as well as get ideas from other agencies rather than just rework the wheel. The perfect examples, we have a large landscape contractor, which I think I've heard from all of you, at one comment or another, since I've been here already, maybe several, including the city manager. And so at the end of the day, in my prior agency, what we did is we broke that up, we did multiple RFPs, we did one for medians, we did one for parks, we did one for Public Rights Way, and one for facilities, and that allowed it to be much more efficient and much more manageable to take one bite of the elephant at a time. Right now, you just have the elephant, and we might be, you know, polishing one thing at a time, but at the end of the day, we're not fundamentally addressing the whole elephant and really being able to address it. So having supervisors, in this case, directors that are really experienced in their field, will create those accountability systems and further enhance the philosophy that I'm trying to set in, in Public Works Department, and as well as Parks and Recreation, which will be a component of this as well. So we, we also, the other thing that it will do, in my opinion, is, I've already given a proposed model for how to handle CIP going forward and all the benefits that it will provide. It will, this will effectively inject a lot of resources to address the CIP as well, that we just currently don't have the bodies. Some projects take years, maybe two, in my opinion, too long, just because of the sheer magnitude of resources. And it's, it's not to say, I'm not saying it's really anybody's fault, it's just the reality, this is the first time, I think, that we've ever presented this kind of information to the council and the community, and because of that, you're seeing exactly how short-staffed we are, yet we have some funding to do certain projects. And there's only so many Bob Critchfields I can clone, so to speak, right? And so we need... And so we need more engineering staff, we need more advanced planning staff, because we're not currently doing any of that proactive planning. And each day that we delay, even though I believe this is a nominal improvement, I consider it largely a phase one for Public Works, it is a step in the right directions towards addressing advanced planning and engineering areas where, as I just mentioned on streets and roads, we have the same problem on water. The longer you delay on your infrastructure projects for utilities, the more and more expensive it will become, and it's not linear. It jumps up in orders of magnitude, just like your streets and roads. So this is an attempt to fill those gaps and start to address those things with the new philosophy that I'm hoping to bring, and I've already, I think, brought a little bit to the Public Works team, in terms of organizational structure and accountability.
Councilmember Moss?
Go ahead.
Can you pull up slide 70? I think going off of what Councilman Garcia said, it's worthy of a re-note here for the public, because when I first heard the information prior to tonight, you hear seven employees, but really the cost, if you look on the slide, is going down in the general fund by 19K. So you, it's hard to wrap your mind around when you're putting additional staff, and you're saving 583K by getting and eliminating those three contracts. Then I would imagine a little bit of funding would come from the water and sewer fund to offset those salaries. So as the public knows, and we're looking at roadways and how to address them and working on funding, we still can't meet that measurement without effective staffing, and by doing this effective reorganization, you're only asking for seven employees, when we just learned we're 98 short. That's on the high side, but seven is still falls, falls short of even the 50 required for a city of this size, all with only a general fund hit of 19K. So I think that's, I just wanted to make.
Savings of 19K.
Savings of $19,000. So, you know, that's what, I think, trying to get that educational component around of the adjustment, and then maybe you would be coming forward at a future time to show us where our milestones have been met, and how much more we could go for the next phase, if you're looking at employee stats and what positions you filled.
Absolutely, and I think part of this is also looking at ways to increase funding for the city. There's been areas that I think we've identified that other municipalities are generating revenue, that we're not, and I think myself and City Manager Blay and Mr. Parker are examining those options in real time, to come back and have conversations with the council and the community, to ensure that we have the right resources for a city of this size to deliver what the community is asking for, particularly on streets and roads.
Okay, so, first of all, thank you. What a presentation. Once again, it's an eye-opener for a very small group of people, and I wish I could find out how many people are at home or watching this, or will end up watching this over the next few months, because we're right back where we started years ago. We're at the same place, we're short $126 million for our roads, we're short $40 million for our alleys, and we're short $26 million for our parking lots. So, and we brought in staffing to get some of these cap improvement projects done. We've had the money to do it, we just didn't have the staffing to do it. Didn't even have the staffing to go out to get the bids. So, as frustrating as it must be for the city employees, I must say that I'm as frustrated for the city employees also, because I know how hard they're working, and when you look at the amount of staff shortages that we have, it's somewhat embarrassing for this council, I think, to know that we're that much behind a city with significantly less residents. It's mind-boggling for me to drive around our city, and I was in adjoining city of ours Sunday, and I got to be honest with you, their streets were not any better than ours. And the revenue they generate is substantially, their percentage that they're generating is substantially higher than ours. And I've thought back and said, in the last four years, had we have been able to get that one penny, we're looking at about $120 million that we would have had at our disposal to get our roads, to get a lot of these programs, I'm done. So this document here that we have, and the presentation, Damian, and the work that Public Works and the rest of the staff put into this type of stuff, and when you get people that come to city council and say, "We're not being transparent," it's embarrassing, because we have been so transparent, as long as I've been on this dais, we've been transparent. And it's just embarrassing to think that, as great as this city could be, a short time ago, that reputation was destroyed, and we've done nothing but be transparent, and this document here is another example of why residents should be coming here and saying, "We need to do something, we need that extra penny, we need to get our streets done." We would be so far along right now if we had that revenue. And it's, I'm not going to stop fighting for it, I'm telling you right now, every time I see one of these documents, and I know it's true, because I drive this city, we all drive this city, we see the streets, we see the parks, we see the, we talk to residents, we hear the residents tell us what they want, what they want to see, you know? And here we go out, go out of our way to get extra money from our county supervisors, and we're finally getting Foothill Boulevard started. Isn't that something? You know what? We got to go to Congress to get money to help our public safety. We shouldn't be having to go to other people. That should be for whipped cream on the ice cream. We should have, our city should be, our residents should be stepping up and saying, "Hey, we want to have a strong police force, we want to have a strong city, Public Works part, we want to have our utilities, we want to have everything top of the line. We want the best," because that's what Upland was known as, was the premier city of the inland empire. We're not there anymore. Could be, but our residents got to start trusting and start stepping up and knowing that it's, everybody has to help out in this thing. And when I look out here and I see some residents coming here, Jim Flock coming here every week now, listening, and I know he's putting out the word about our city, and it's something we've got to take into consideration in this council as we move forward. We've got to be risk, we've got to take that risk of getting our, you know, our fannies kicked sometimes by residents that don't want to hear it, but we got to keep telling them. Here you go, there you go. Right there, that's just one part of this, isn't it? We haven't even looked at other parts of the city, we haven't gone into the finance side of the house, we haven't gone into the other side, planning. This is just one side, and we're short. How many employees? Okay.
Approximately 100, Mayor.
Does that include any other departments?
No, just Public Works.
Okay. Folks, I mean, you've got a city of Chino, 615 employees, with a population of maybe 10,000 or more than Upland, are we a little over 300? A little over 300, Mike? What do we have, city employees?
About 265.
260, okay, oh, thank, man, I was way off. 265 employees and Chino's over 615. Come on. How do I go out to the residents in Upland and tell them, "Here's, why isn't things getting done?" There's reason. 301 employees for 315, 340 people? Come on. And guess what? I look out here on the dais, off the dais, and I've got, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, maybe residents? Sorry. Every Monday, we're here for the last four weeks, we're going to be in here. Every other, twice a month, we're here on Monday nights. The only time we get a crowd here is when we're trying to do something that's going to make a difference in our city. That's when they come. It's because of the garbage that's put out in our community, the lies that happen. Give us a chance. You want a better city, residents, we've got to step up. I do. It costs me, too. That's all I have. Thank you. Any others? Shannon?
I think you bring a valuable point up in how we get this information out to the public, that when we do take the time and we do have this tool and how we're going to educate, and I know that other cities sometimes will do snapshot presentations quarterly, maybe it's something to consider through the city manager's office in the future, that when we do hit a milestone, that we bring a snapshot of economic development or a snapshot of Public Works, so that this isn't just something that they go now and do, and that we don't get a report back on that. Probably the most valuable tool we have is the viewership of the council meetings, even over committee meetings and special meetings. You'll probably get more of a tune in on that portion. And then something that I had talked to Mr. Arula about was, it's easier for council members to navigate with the public if we have a snapshot of funding on Foothill Boulevard. So when you try to link a CIP five-year plan document, we're used to that as council, but to have to turn to one page and go pasting gas tax and different taxes, and so Mr. Arula had said that that was already coming forward to us, to be able to give us that tool to say, "Hey, you know, Foothill Boulevard was 13.5 million," but in that presentation, it was where all of that money comes from, so that we can then share that out to the public, rather than trying to craft our own social media and crafting our own tools, that we would be able to utilize that through our media department to put that fact out for them. And I don't know if you wanted to speak to that, but I know that you have used that in your other cities, where you've put that plan forward.
Yes, it's, the current document that's before you is a funding-oriented document, and that it's structured by fund. So you will have a project that is listed multiple times throughout that document, and as you indicated, you have to kind of put that together, or do the math, so to speak. And the new document that is already underway, and if the council approves this package tonight, they already have instructions, the team, actually, that's behind me here, already knows, we met on this morning, they will immediately start putting together the new model, and the new model is a project-oriented model that is sent out once a month. We'll have a monthly meeting with all departments, cross-collaboration, and notes will be asked for updates for each project manager in advance of the meeting, so the meetings are more efficient, and we will use that as a tracking document in real time, both with finance and all departments, to create more accountability and faster and more efficient project delivery, and we'll be assigning more project managers as well. So, actually working with Mr. Critchfield and some staff on a training program, that is for any staff that wish to do CIP projects, some are more complicated than others, and this will give career growth and development opportunities to staff that want to take on those opportunities, while at the same time leveraging the limited resources that we have, and really expanding that CIP kind of accountability through that document. So the first meeting that'll take place will be actually the end of June with that new document, and once we have it, I'll send it to City Manager Blay and the council. That will be our official document going forward, which will be a live document that is updated monthly.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing nothing, again, one final thank you to staff, Public Works, and those city employees in attendance tonight. I want to thank you for taking time to come in here also. Again, we want things to work, and what we're going to get to work is if we enroll our city, and if we can get our residents enrolled in the vision of what we need to accomplish. You know, I don't, I'm not chastising anyone in the community, I'm not trying to do that, I just want, it's really, I'm passionate about letting the city know, the residents really understand what it costs today to operate a city. It's mind-boggling when you start looking across and looking at what costs have gone up in the last three to five years. Unbelievable. To go to the store, and we hear from residents, "Yeah, costs have gone up, it's gone up with the city, too, and we're not getting the revenues to show that," okay? So again, I want to thank the council for taking the time, everybody being here tonight, and we will adjourn until the next Upland City Council meeting on Monday, June 9th. We are adjourned.